I'd like to call the regular council meeting of Tuesday, August 2013 to order. Ask everyone to please rise. We're going to have the communication led by Councilman Tera, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Evans.
A police officer's prayer. Almighty God, whose great power and eternal wisdom embraces the universe, watch over all policemen and law enforcement officers. Protect them from harm in the performance of their duty to stop crime, robberies, riots, and violence, we pray. Help them keep our streets and homes safe day and night. We recommend them to your loving care because their duty is dangerous. Grant them your unending strength and courage in their daily assignments. Dear God, protect these brave men and women. Grant them your almighty protection. Unite them safely with their families after their duty has ended. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tera?
Here.
Honley?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Mace?
Here.
Smulligan?
Here.
Gersky?
Here. We'll have the reading of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on July 16, 2013.
Motion accepted, written.
Second. Motion by Dave, second by Brian. Anybody have any questions? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye, have it.
Hey, this is a letter from the Tamaco Community Arts Center. Dear Kevin and Tamaco Fire, oh, sorry, Tamaco Traffic Committee. Tamaco Community Arts Center thanks you for your help in securing parking space in the railroad street lot during the July 3 performance of the Air National Guard. Your support and collaboration helped to make the event a success. Sincerely, The owner, Ray. This is from the South Ward Playground Association, to whom it may concern. The playground is once again holding a 9/11 ceremony at the playground on 9/11/13 at 6:00 P.M. You are graciously invited to attend and speak at this event. You may share your words of wisdom or thoughts about this unforgettable day in U.S. history. Your participation will help keep this going for many years. Please reply no later than September 4 so that we may have time to prepare our program together for the event. Event coordinator Shelley Bonser will be called.
And a letter from Boy Scout Troop 777. Dear President Gersky, I am writing to request council's permission to camp overnight at the Alkirk Dam. Now that the Alkirk Dams are open to the public, our Boy Scout troop would like to do a service project in Camp Alkirk Dams this weekend. A scout from another local troop is doing a project at the Alkirk Dams on August 24th and August 31st and asks our troop for help. We are coordinating this project with the Alkirk Reservoir Commission. If Borough Council Akuta requests, we plan to camp near the lower dam and use the pavilion and campfire circle. Thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, please contact me. Sincerely, Kevin and Scout.
Motion granted.
Have they contacted the reservoir commission? There's a second before we discuss.
Second.
There's a motion by Dave, a second by Dan. Have they contacted the reservoir commission?
Oh, I did. We contacted Tom and Tori and they have no problem with the question.
The question, Kevin, is do you charge insurance carrier to be aware of these new, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot out there.
Yeah, well, the insurance company's policy is if it's approved by council, then it's covered by insurance.
So, they're really not supposed to count.
We have all the insurance.
People just can't talk about permission.
Any other questions or comments in council?
There should be some signs to that effect.
I think there is a sign that says no. There's a sign that says no. They have signs in the.
There will be a lot, there will be a lot of them.
It's been a little bit past. We've had the troops camp there before and we had a few of the folks from the probation program who were standing. But only, only with council's approval. That's what we're talking about.
Any other questions or comments in council? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye, have it. Any other communications? And a special business. We still have 216 Pitch Street on our, on our agenda as special business for people in the audience who are new. 216 Pitch Street was a blighted and some property that we're having some issues with. And so we asked the borough manager to put this on a report so that the council can follow along with the enforcement actions. The council should have a copy of the enforcement action that date back to June of last year. Is there anything in the report other than what we have in front of us?
Yeah, there's been one new development since our last meeting and you'll see we were notified that there's a hearing scheduled on September 18 at Magistrate. So, we'll be notifying Frank Morris, who lives next door, I'm sure he would be a participant attending. And of course, you know, any other people that they would like to attend are welcome. But that's, that's the latest development in that case, but during on September 18.
Anybody have any questions about that property? Okay, borough managers report.
I made a note on the agenda about the 2013 community development grant program. Prior to this meeting, we had a public hearing, actually the second public hearing. We were, for this program, we were notified recently that the applications are due September 20th. Which gives us just about a month to put an application together. So, they didn't give us a whole, whole lot of time this, this year to work on that. But, at any rate, it was discussed prior to this meeting and you do have a copy of the resolution which would authorize our staff to file for the CDPG funds. That's something that we need to do every year when we send in our application. We have a resolution, so I ask council to consider adopting that resolution. Does everyone have a copy of it? Does it forward the act due? It should be attached to, right to your agenda. It authorizes our staff to apply for.
Make a motion to authorize the staff to apply for the 2013 CDPG grant. Adopt the resolution for a second.
Second. Motion by Dave, second by Ken. Any other questions? Just if we can note the amount, $104,286. Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, it's a resolution, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Tera?
Yes.
Honley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Smulligan?
Yes.
Trudish? Gersky?
I have a few other things to mention to you that are related to the CDPG program. At the hearing, we also discussed parking meters. We had money allocated in last year's program, parking meters. And I asked our mayor person to get the votes from some companies. The Department of Community Economic Development told us that when we buy these meters, we need to give them out a bid or buy from a Co-Stars vendor. Co-Stars is the state's cooperative purchasing program. So, we got two quotes from what I would call the predominant companies in business, Dunkin and P.O.M. P.O.M. is a Co-Stars vendor and they gave us the industry rate at $122.50 per meter. So, we've $16,000 allocated and we were able to purchase roughly 130 parking meters. Dunkin is not a Co-Stars vendor, incidentally. But, we got that. This is, this is the last, this is, I mean, last year's CDPG program. It's like, which is, we got that funding approved in June of this year. By the way, I would bring that to your attention, that funding is available when we have the votes.
I'd like to make a motion that the borough with the 2012 CDPG money purchase, the 100 and, what, 30?
131.
131 parking meters as part of that project for the downtown.
Second. Motion by Dan, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just under question, we're buying under Co-Stars.
Yes, if we don't, we have to put it out to bid.
Twenty five cent meters.
We would need to determine the rate before we purchase them.
The time limit?
The time limit and the rate per hour. We don't have the program.
Parking Traffic Committee is going to meet on that next week?
Tuesday. And Chip is, Chip is okay with, with either of these vendors as far as the equipment goes?
Yes, Dunkin is the vendor we've been using solely for years. But he had a discussion with P.O.M. and they're interchangeable. They, either meter can be put into either housing. And it does come with a one-year warranty. And they are both the premier parking meter companies in the country, so. We have a good feeling about P.O.M.
We have a motion, a second. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye, have it.
I have a few other announcements that are related to our CDPG program. You recall that we advertised for bids. We demolished a tour Gay Street. The contract informs us that you plan to start that project next week. Also, we had advertised for bids for the replacement of a sewer line on Swatara Street. That was also being funded through our CDPG program. We opened bids in August and I don't, we don't have a recommendation from council tonight. We did prevent the results of bid opening. The low bidder was Dirtwork Solutions. We can't make a recommendation just yet because we're waiting on some information from Dirtwork. So, we do have 60 days to make a decision. So, we hope to come to the next meeting with a recommendation.
Can you clarify the information you're looking for?
Yeah, the concern was what the project entails is to run a new sewer line through an old. It's just a line we could use in the old line nicely. But it needs to be grounded and sealed. This line, I don't know, runs under the Walbach Group. So, our engineer needs, or is, we and our engineer need some evidence from them to qualify and have experience doing this kind of work. It's a bit of a specialty type of field. And we don't have that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, we'll have, we'll have a recommendation for you at the next meeting. We're not satisfied with the immediate one. Instead, we might have to look at the second one. And you can see the significant price difference there. I guess the next thing I need to ensure with you tonight is related to the Alkirk Dams. We had the grand opening this past weekend. I think it went well, it was well-attended. The construction out there, as you know, it is completed.
Can you finish the report?
Yeah, the work never, oh, actually, I do, I do have that here. The, the work never really ends, though. What we're required to do is each year, we have to have an inspection of all our dams. Last year, DDP gave us a decree. They did require us to do an inspection in Alkirk because it's under construction. But that's only a one-year decree. They informed us that starting again this year and every year thereafter, we need to have an engineer inspect the dams and submit a report to them. So, Alfred Benish, who has been doing the dams for us, provided me with a proposal to inspect the two dams at some cost of $3,000, which is a little bit lower than prior years. Because they're able to buy some of this work with some final inspection work out there with the construction. So, I ask you to, the council, consider that.
Before you have a motion, just to clarify, DDP is saying this was a construction project for the better part of this year, but we still have to get it certified this year anyway.
Yes.
Make a motion.
Because I think you have to inspect the new part.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve Benish's proposal for $3,000.
$3,000.
Not just sum, $3,000. $3,000 to inspect the Alkirk Dams.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave, second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I'll second. Sorry about that.
Brian sent an order on it that's the same price that we paid Ken at Flaming for.
But it's lower.
A little bit more.
Yeah, they were charging us $3,700. This year, they probably charged a little less because they've seen a lot of what they did in the CDP program, the final inspections after the construction. So, they feel like it gives us the most price.
Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion?
I'll second. The $2,000, of course, covers both dams. I'm making sure.
Anybody else have any questions or comments about this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye, have it.
I guess. Oh, I received a, a letter from the School of County Tax Plan Bureau on a repository sale. This is 631 Hazel Street. The bidder is Jesse Holy, Dr. Ringel. The county, we, I believe, I should share this with you, the county currently gives us about three days to respond. They're looking for response by August 21st. The, Mr. Holy, as far as we can determine, only owns one property in the county and that appears to be his home. We can't find any other history of uncorrected code violations, anything of that nature. So, I would ask council to consider approving that sale.
Motion by Ken, a second.
Second.
Second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? I just have one comment, we don't have any outstanding code violations against the property. Because he would be obligated to correct those. Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye, have it.
Just, Dan Schrader had provided us with this potential list and that property is actually on the list. Brian pointed that out earlier.
What was it on the list? 631.
631, so.
I apologize.
That's mainly probably because you didn't have it off of Kevin. So, just make a note on that.
If you could check, if you could check to see what's on it and let council know.
Should I just hold off on it?
Whether. Whether we approve it or not, the county's going to sell it to us. But we should make the new owner aware of any violations that he's corrected. We, we wouldn't be able to prevent this person from purchasing the property because there's violations on the property. We'd only be able to prevent him from purchasing the property if he has a history of code violations. So, so regardless of the condition of the property.
Okay, is he aware of some violations?
Well, that's what I just said to Kevin. We have to make sure that if there are, if there are any, we have to make him aware.
He might not want it then. I think we better hold off on this then, because we can check this out fully.
We need to make sure that he's aware of the condition of the property and any outstanding violation of it.
Doesn't the county advise potential buyers of that? If it's based on.
The county doesn't have any record of our code history.
What I mean is that there would be income on the buyer to investigate that?
Yeah, they, they tell them.
Yeah.
But we could actually tell them specifically what issue. Anything else, Kevin? What are we doing, Kevin? You passed out a street paving amendment. We need to do anything of that now, no?
Yes. Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot to put that on my list. That's also related to our CDPG program. For a couple of years, we've been banking money in, in CDPG towards a paving project. So, we, we applied for funding to do a good portion of Alkirk Road and also a portion of Lafayette Street and Essekent Street. And recently, Rob worked up an estimate for us and that's, that's my interview. To do those, to do those areas, Essekent, we offer maybe $1,000. We have $126,000 available through our CDPG program. I have to talk with our 10 dot representative and see if we could cover that difference with, with your money. I don't, I don't know the answer to that, just to.
Council, is it the cost estimates from, from Rob Jones on what it would cost for you to pay each of the segments of those streets? Do you need action from us tonight? Or are you going to wait until we figure out what liquid fuels might pay for?
I guess.
Liquid fuels should cover the rest of it.
Well, I'm hoping. It's two different programs and I don't recall us mixing funds like that before. That's why I need to talk to our guy at 10 dot, see if we can cover the difference in liquid fuel. Or we have to cover it with CDPG funds or, or scale back projects. I don't have the answer for you on that right now.
Can we, can we scale back the project list that's on here, for example, and do one to three? And then whatever other liquid fuel money's available, plus what's left over out of that, do some other projects for our amount?
Yeah, we could approve the spend of 120, the CDPG money that we have, regardless of the answer on liquid fuels.
But I also want to look at the projects themselves and spell out the bill.
If we can use liquid fuels, I'd like to, I'd like to do that and do what we can get all done. We haven't been banking some liquid fuels money lately.
All done where? All done where?
Well, I'd like to do the whole.
Everything on the list.
Everything on the list, if, if we can. You know, if we can use.
So, where would that take us out to Alkirk? We already did Alkirk. From where to where already?
Apparently up to 357.
But I'm saying, where is that? How many miles is that? What is that?
429.
John, give us a mile marker. Give us a. So, the first slash, how many miles did we do at Alkirk last year? Year before. The last couple of years. Year before. We did the bigger project last year, the year before.
We've been done for at least for about two years.
Two years. Where did we go, two years with a? Section by Jimmy Knowles' house there. That area's been done.
Yeah.
Okay, give us, yeah, give us a landmark. Show us, that's a landmark where we had. We did out to Parambo's. And then we skipped the spot we did in front of Olds because that was real bad. We did, I think, 100 feet there or something. So, we going past Olds out now? Out in front of their, well, it's probably. Out towards the Seven Hill. So, if we did the box 385, how many miles out here would, have we, have we? This year's going to be 3,200 feet.
Yeah.
That you're going to do. That's towards the outside. You've got 1,570 feet, you've got 1,630, so that's giving you 3,200 feet. And that, that's what we were saying where we're going to do because we didn't do nothing for two years out there. But that's all out towards the county line. That's from Parambo's out. So, we haven't done anything in town, but we're going to go to a whole length Alkirk. All I'm saying is if we're going to spread out, let's spread out. We do a mile, we can do a mile here, we do a mile here. Save some of that money and do some other streets in town, too. Well.
Well, it's CDPG money, so we have to watch where we do it.
Well, okay, you've got 126,000.
You can only do it in certain areas.
For CBG money. And, and the total cost that you have figured here is 181,000. It's okay, if you do 126 with CBG and do the rest with liquid fuels. They can get all that done.
That's my hope, but I don't have an answer.
Split it up. And I'm saying is if we don't have enough, I'm willing to forego the last mile of Alkirk to do some spots elsewhere. That's what I'm saying. Well. All the way out the end of the Harbin County line, where Larry McCulion is, there's a section there, maybe 300 feet. And that, we always had trouble with water and stuff, and he's been complaining. And he's, he's, he's willing to fix the ditch himself with drainage in and stuff, if we blacked out that section. Do you need me to say anything to you about it? What's it talked to me about? So, that, that would be a help with.
Does it make, does it help? Do you need a motion tonight? Do we need to take action or do we need to wait for you to get an answer on liquid fuels?
I guess so. If, if I can use full CDPG liquid fuels, I'd like to proceed with this. If I can't, we'll have to scale it back.
So, if you didn't take all those projects, Kevin, we could use it? So, if you didn't take all four of those projects, in other words, is CDPG that specific that says I am paving box 387 and 429 Alkirk?
Yes.
So, they are that specific that we applied for that section?
Yes, we did. Actually, they are. Yeah. There's only, you can only use CDPG funds to pave in certain areas. We have to show a little more on it compared to that.
And all four of these qualify?
Yeah.
So, if we showed another low.
Alkirk was actually a bit of a difficult sell, but they ended up approving. But yes, these were applied for and approved.
So, they can't be modified? So, if we found another.
Well, they can be.
My, my point is if we found another low, moderate income area that's in need of paving, we could switch the project, correct?
We would have to go through that approval process like we did recently. Remember the revision process coming up early this year. We might go through that process.
I think we should give Kevin some direction tonight as far as, obviously, if the liquid fuels allows us to do everything on that list, we'd do that. But if, if it doesn't, what do you want to pare back to get down to 126,000? Which is the money we have and expect.
One through three, that's it?
That's the motion.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Make the one, two, and three.
There's a second. And then if we have four, is there a second for the motion? The motion is that if, if the liquid fuels doesn't cover any of these projects, we're going to use, use CDPG funds.
So, so, okay, so that's clarified. So, if the liquid fuels cannot cover the entire list, then we're going to do one, two, and three. Understand?
Is that right, Dave? That's your motion, Tom, that's your second? Understand? Anybody else have any questions or comments about the motion? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Anything else, Kevin?
Chief of Police.
Corporal, you have your report?
Yeah, um, just one thing. The District Attorney for Public County, she was at the night out thing and she was so impressed with the DARA officers' rapport with the students and the community. Uh, she sent us a check for two hundred dollars to donate towards that, uh, the DARA program. I just would like you to know that, that she had done that. Thought that was pretty nice.
The officers did a nice job there. We might think it was a nice crowd. Several of you were there. Please do a nice job representing the officers. Good night. Anything else, Paul? Committee reports. Parking and traffic.
So, just wanted to, uh, as I mentioned earlier, parking and traffic is gonna meet next Tuesday to, uh, do a, a variety of things that we've been discussing the last couple of months. Uh, one thing I would like to do, uh, tonight though, is make a motion to approve a handicap parking space for Kevin Van Reed. That's three twenty Columbia Street in Tamacqua.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Dan seconded by Brian to approve a handicap spot at three twenty Columbia Street. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Finance wage and salary committee.
A couple of motions under this committee. First one is a motion to retain Frank Morris as a full-time street maintenance worker effective around his twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-thirteen. Everybody is satisfied with his work. And his probationary period ends this date.
Second motion is... Motion by Tom, seconded by Brian. Do we have any questions or comments?
If I could, Eric pointed out, I made a mistake on the fees. I'm off by a couple of days. Then what can I vote? Uh, Morris should be August twenty-sixth. And the next one, Stidham should be September second.
Oh, you're gonna modify your motion?
I'll modify.
Frank, modify the second.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Eyes have it.
And the motion to retain Jay Stidham as a full-time water distribution worker effective September second, twenty-thirteen.
The second, second, September second.
The second. Seconded by John. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Eyes have it.
And third motion is to adopt a fee schedule resolution revising the zoning authority permit fees. And there's an attachment, uh, we've been going over this for several months and, uh, Kenny Smolgin looked things over and Frank Kane, uh, looked over it and the committee is ready to say that this is, uh, ready to go. Kevin typed up, uh, a report. You have that report in here, Kevin, somewhere?
Yeah, there's a, there should be a resolution of the proposed fee schedule that we attached to the general. I guess we should just...
What do you do with this comments column? All right, I made the motion. Second.
A motion by Tom and a seconded by Brian to adopt the resolution setting our fee schedule.
Under the question, what's this comment, the comments section over thirty dollars, thirty-five?
That's, uh, it's increased. That's the notes that Josh had given to me, our code officer. Uh, I guess when the committee got together and reviewed it, they wanted to change it to that amount.
No, decrease. Represents the increase.
Uh, no, no, that's, uh...
Change. This one doesn't represent an increase.
The, the first column is the, is a current fee. The second column was like the last proposal that we had.
No.
And the third column is what the committee, uh, they changed to.
So I think the, the resolution's ambiguous because if, if this is gonna be the resolution that sets up fees, which column, which column is?
When I say, I think so.
What I, what I would do is, there'd only be one column.
Be one of the columns. That's it.
I understand which column we're talking about.
This looks like a worksheet.
What would be the proposed column except for these no charges?
Does everybody understand that?
If you recall, we had done like two or three versions of this with people.
Well, I thought we...
There seemed to be some confused.
Why, why aren't we going by the proposed fee? That the proposed fees are the new fee? That's what the motion is, to go with the...
The proposed fees. Proposed fees and forget about this comments section here, because these are the things that Josh did not get. The comment.
Well, this is, all, all we did was, uh, we, we took what Josh gave us and created a new document. Those comments were on, on those he gave me that read that there was, uh, these would be changed around now.
Under the question, Tom, some of these, you know, figures you and I discussed, and I know you showed them to Frank Kane, and I see very few of them changed. Some of them are a hundred percent, a two-hundred percent, three-hundred percent.
What are some of them?
Uh, how about demolition? Twenty bucks, twenty to fifty.
Exactly.
Okay, uh...
Do we know that we're behind on all our fee schedules versus the rest of the county?
Does that make it right?
I think it, it makes it justified that we're losing money. That we're coming out ahead.
We're not losing money on a demolition permit.
Yeah, we are.
Sure we are.
How? The stroke of a pen?
We, we have to, we have to pay, we have to pay our, our permit officer to issue that permit.
Yeah, how long's that take?
Sometimes, sometimes a lot, sometimes weeks. It depends on, it depends on the project. They're not always simple. The, the days of just taking an application and just having someone sign off on it are over.
Yeah, I mean, this, us being the lowest in the, in the area, doesn't make it right.
It makes it right, Kevin. I'm just saying, we just...
I mean, I could see raising it a little bit. Raise it five dollars, raise it ten dollars, not a hundred percent.
When was the last time we raised anything?
It doesn't matter, but...
Sure it does. If we haven't raised anything in twenty-five years, we're behind.
How do you, how do you know we didn't raise?
That's why I'm asking. How did we raise? When did last time we rose? We, we had a raise. I'd love to pay for gas, the same price for gas that everybody was paying in nineteen seventy-two, too.
We're not doing, we're not being fair to the, to the ratepayers. I mean, Barry Isaac gets a percentage, so he's gonna get himself a raise.
And that more money we collect on it. I'm just saying, we're, we're behind.
So I'm sure we're giving them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We'll be giving them two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. I can, I, like I said, I said to Tom, I said, I could see raising rates and fees a little, not a lot. Some of the square footage rates are, are outrageous. I figured it out. When you're talking about a five thousand square foot building, so you get done with the permit, it's gonna be seventeen hundred dollars. If the permit fee was seventy-five dollars? Commercial, any kind of building.
Oh, I'm saying that, that footage would be a commercial building.
What's that?
I said, that, that footage, I imagine that'd be a commercial size structure.
Yeah, I mean, if they're charged, they would've charged more for commercial versus residential, but they're both higher.
So you're building, they could build it at a half a million dollars.
Instead of five cents a square foot, they wanna go twenty-five cents a square foot. Okay, for residential structures. So if you go to five thousand square foot building, do the math. You pay the, pay the permit, you pay for your percentage of whatever it is per square foot, it's almost two thousand bucks.
I mean, a new single family...
So you're discouraging people to build a home.
A new single-family dwelling for permits would cost fourteen hundred forty-eight dollars. Three quarters of an acre, twenty-one hundred square feet. One thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars. That's what a permit costs.
Too much.
It's too much. Why? If you're building a three hundred thousand dollar home.
Oh, so that makes it right.
Or two hundred thousand.
But it's really...
If they can afford a new house, so they can afford to pay the, the actual fees that we've charged.
That's my problem. It's all proportionate.
You gotta realize that's gonna be added on to your tax bill.
I understand that the borough...
You're gonna collect taxes on that, then you wanna crucify the guy for building it.
Kenny, I, I actually agree with you that the fees are high, but you have to keep in mind our fees have to be reflective of the costs that we incur. And we don't have a choice. The, the building code, the statewide building code says certain requirements for reviewing building permit applications. And, you know, those aren't things that we can avoid doing. Um, you know, it's a state law that's mandated on all municipalities to, to either do it internally as we do it or to have the state do it. Um, and in which case, the building permit fees would be a lot higher. So, I mean, the, the alternative would be to not do this or to lose money on the review.
I was gonna say, if we don't, if we don't put the cost in the person who's requesting the permit, then that cost just transfers to the taxpayers in Tamacqua. So the cost to review is gonna be the same regardless.
There are some areas that does cost money where you have to have a, what do they call that?
Actress.
No, no, my second, uh...
Pre-inspections. More than one inspection.
When a, when a woman comes in or a man comes in or does all the...
Notary?
Believe, just, not a notary, I can't do it.
A stenographer?
It's a notary, I'm sure. Yeah, I mean, I understand that, you know, if they're gonna charge seventy-five or a hundred dollars an hour, we should be charging that at least.
Does that make it right that they charge that money? We should charge it?
No, it doesn't, but I mean, that's, that's some of the areas where we're losing money.
So why, why is it okay to pay a stenographer with their charging, but not okay for us to pay an engineer or that reviews the permits with, with H table?
I understand that. When, when costs are incurred, I can see we should pass it on to the ratepayers.
And do you understand that costs are incurred when, when we review building permit applications?
On certain items, there's certain items here that are the stroke of a pen, Mike, and they want, and we wanna go a hundred percent, a two-hundred percent or higher, I don't agree.
But I, I would again go back...
You're gonna chase people away.
I would again go back to the stroke of the pen days are over, where you can just walk in and people sign it without looking at it. I just don't think that that happens.
Yeah, I'm sorry, not to be smart, but to use that logic, we should've had a rash of building in Tamacqua over the last twenty years. Because the rates were lower. Didn't we?
Oh, I don't know what the statistics are. I'm just saying, what's fair is fair.
You live in the community. I mean, there's been, there's been a rash of home buildings.
Do you like your grocery bill to go from a hundred dollars to three hundred dollars overnight? No, that's what we're doing here.
I was building a home. Part of building a home.
I can just look at this.
You've gotta pay fourteen hundred dollars for a permit to build a house. You know what? You're gonna do it, you're gonna go someplace else.
Or it's three times higher, probably.
Zoning change from five hundred dollars to a thousand.
Right here, you've got how many houses you wanna tear down? Try and talk these people into fixing these houses, not tearing them down. Is that all tax dollars off of our money that we're collecting? Now we're gonna punish the people that want to build? Where are you gonna build in Tamacqua in the first place?
Talking to you. Thanks, John.
Any other questions or comments about the proposed fee schedule? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, it's a resolution. We'll have a roll call vote.
Karen.
Yes.
Conley.
Yes.
Evans.
No.
Lace.
Yes.
Smolgin.
No.
Trudish.
No.
Erskine.
No. I think some of the, I think some of the fees that, that were suggested under the comments column, like the rental property inspection.
But the rental property inspection, he, he has to go back to a time.
No, he couldn't, Tom, Tom, he wants to raise his inspections for rental up to fifty dollars from twenty-five dollars. And every time he, and if, there's something wrong, he's gotta come back, that twenty-five dollars again. How many, and why shouldn't it be?
It's not every time he comes back. It's, it's one time for inspection, no matter how, how many times he goes back. You don't pay twenty-five dollars every time he comes back.
You do. They, they do, they actually do. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Why shouldn't it?
If they call and say, I'm up to code, and they say, I'm ready, and they go back in and they're not up to code, why should we have to pay for?
Well, suppose...
We get complaints all around town.
Is everybody perfect?
No, but don't call them when they're done.
I'm not perfect, and I don't think you are.
I'm not, but I went home until I was done. Three to four times I have to go back?
It shouldn't have per...
My point is, everybody complains. Everybody complains. We don't do rentals. We have cut grass that's here. We have porches that are dilapidated. We got this. But yet, we don't want anybody to go and inspect them and stop it and find them when they're wrong. Somebody's gotta pay for it. And all we're saying is, let them pay for it. It's time for the borough to stop paying for it. Make the people that are doing the violations, let them clean up their stuff and let them pay for it. And it costs them a hundred dollars, it costs them a hundred dollars. That's how I feel. Sorry.
Some of these people don't wanna do all of the work that Josh says you need to do. Josh will tell them, you need to do this, 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 and this. You know what? They wanna do those things because it's gonna cost them money, so they do a couple of them. And he comes back and he says, why didn't you do this, this, and this? And the guy says, well... Then he, then he says...
Is that happening?
This is what he said.
Absolutely.
This is what he said. The problem is, that's why he wants to raise it. Because there's certain people that he has to deal with that drive him, drive him nuts. He has to keep going back because they don't do all of the stuff that he tells them that needs to be done.
You just keep looking, running up and down the streets of Tamacqua and watch for these red and yellow stickers on the houses. And then they're gonna be added to this list and the taxpayers are gonna put the bill to tear all these houses down. Right now, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Where are you gonna get money to tear nineteen houses down?
Some of those houses are already tore down on that list. And many of them aren't paying taxes anyway. Most of them are. Most of them don't pay taxes. Yorkeburg Street properties are already down. Do you have anything else under finance wage and salary? We're gonna just back this list. We're gonna get back that page. Do you have anything else under finance wage and salary?
Yeah, I know. Hey, we, we got, we didn't have a pension meeting, but we got some paperwork. And I don't know if you guys looked at it, but I was, Karen, you hear, so you're not familiar with the pension.
I mean, Eric, these cities aren't torn down. That's a much public, under the base of projects.
I think this does it very, it probably is fine.
Did you see the losses for this quarter? Ninety-five, ninety-five thousand and seventy-nine?
I didn't get a good chance to remember.
I just...
When's your next meeting?
Well, they have them every three quarters.
Did you miss one or did you miss?
Yeah, you missed one, but I... I thought the market was going pretty good the last quarter and...
October, first November. First, uh, first November.
I'll take it up with Georgia when she gets back with the motion. Kevin, would you, you know, look at this?
I'm sure.
You know, look at these things.
What is that, uh?
Pension, pension performance.
Uh, I don't, I don't recall. Okay, for the last quarter? Oh, yeah, I guess, yeah, because there was a way that they're supposed to review.
So I know you're scheduled to meet quarterly. You can meet between those and, and make up that, you need to get together.
George, if he gets back, he can ask me what's going on.
Anything else?
No.
Neighborhood downtown historic district?
Okay. Three hard motions. First one's a certificate of probity for a sign six fifty-five East Broad Street.
Motion by Ken, seconded by John. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Eyes have it.
And the next one's a certificate of probity for a window ramp and porch change to six South Columbia Street.
Motion by Ken, seconded by John. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Eyes have it.
Okay, and the last one's a certificate of probity for a new service window and stainless steel counter at four oh one West Broad Street.
Motion by Ken, seconded by John. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I do, and forgive me because we just received these minutes tonight. Uh, Tony, I'm hoping you might be able to shed some light on this unanimously approved but deferred the approval of the request for the installation until further info is received of the zoning materials. What does that mean?
If I may, Tony Roddick, Tony Exalferro, a sort of member of Hart County. Uh, the committee that is hopes, our kind of committee, Mark. Uh, we voted to approve the change in the window, uh, which is basically take the same window lower down and the service counter and stainless steel that meets the health code. We deferred meeting and approving the request for a canopy over that window as there were no specifications provided as to the size, what it's gonna be made out of, what it's gonna look like, whether it's gonna be illuminated or not. In order to allow them to start their program and off their process at all, we approved that which we could and deferred the balance until we received additional information. The hopes were not able to be present because of the family emergency.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Eyes have it. Any other committee reports?
Yeah, wait, can I do this, please? It's not, it's not on the agenda, so we'll, we'll know. Chief Weaver interviewed, uh, three candidates for part-time positions on the police department and Corporal Wood, that's when you were part of the procedure. So there's, uh, three people.
and Corporal Woods, that's one of your partner procedures, so there's three people in fact that we would invite to come tonight, so I'm gonna read their names, we're gonna find who will hold on them. Okay, this is part-time police, by the way, is that, is that okay?
Yeah. I'll hit the gavel.
Okay, so the first one will be a motion to hire Jennifer Dempsey.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ken, second by Tom, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor?
Is Jennifer, did you, um, working over in Spookel, Hampshire?
Yes.
And the quality of life ordinance is over there, or?
Uh, not, not right now, it hasn't been agreed on.
There was an angry mob. George is, it's George.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. No.
Okay, next one, I hope I pronounced it correctly. Brigden D.
Odner.
Odner?
Yes.
Okay. As you said, okay. That's a motion to point, it was a part-time position.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ken, second by Tom, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
Okay, well, I'm gonna need some reading for the pronouns. Bradley J. S. What's the motion?
Second, motion by Ken, second by Tom, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it.
Corporal Wood?
Thank you for coming.
Mayor be swearing you in, right?
Absolutely.
After the meeting, put in the works.
Thanks for coming. I think you'll find working for our department an enjoyable experience, we have a really good, a really good department, really good officers, and if you like our community, if you're not familiar with it, you'll get to know the people. We have some issues, we have some problems and concerns, just like any town, but our police department's a very important part of this community, and glad to have you part of it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all.
Any other committee reports? Okay, anybody from the floor wish to address council? Please stand up and state your name and address.
Ray Benetsky, six fifty-two East Broad Street, Tamazco. I wanna know when I'm gonna get that thing fixed out there on East Broad Street. Now, from four o'clock in the morning till eight, nine o'clock, it's nothing but pounding, 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 and I'm tired of it. I am sick and tired of it, that pounding, I'm in bed, I can't even sleep. I mean, you go out there and listen to it, four o'clock in the morning, go out there and listen to it. I'll bring all council out there, and somebody knows they heard the noise out there already. It's unbelievable. The trucks go by here, it's unbelievable. It just keeps pounding and pounding and pounding. My wife can't sleep, I mean, I can't.
You take these bullshit and go out there and sit for a while.
That's what I'm saying.
The trucks go over it.
Well, John, I don't think it's fair to say that about council, I think everybody appreciates that there's, there's a loud noise whenever the truck goes over that bump, so don't try to accuse council of not believing Mr. Benetsky when he comes in here. We've been out there, we've just, we tried to address, and so do we, we tried to address the manhole, we covered that to try to address some noise concerns out there, but I don't think it's fair for you to sit there and say that we don't believe you. We believe you. Now, fixing it is a different issue.
You've been thinking about this for a year now.
So what do you suggest we do, John?
We have to go out there and blacktop over it. That's, but it's state highway, do we do it or is state good?
Well, at the last meeting, we talked about giving it to Pendot, which I did, but I-
I don't care who we give it to, just get it fixed.
I, I think it's Pendot's responsibility.
It's a state road.
It's state highway.
I'm afraid if we, I mean, I, I think it was done that way for drainage, if we build up that area, so to speak, the possibility of drainage problem there.
When you're, when you're going east, trucks go out there and they drop it.
If they're empty.
Yeah, and that's, that, that noise is loud right now.
Pendot replied, twist it off.
I don't see anything.
Therefore, we may, we could possibly wait forever for Pendot, something as well. Wanna move on it, and at least have the staff make a recommendation.
Pendot section should be built and redone, and that should be the state's responsibility, not ours.
Can you do it? That, hurry, reset all that, keep the noise down.
It's a pretty big area, it's the whole intersection.
Since the manhole itself is making the noise, right?
No, no, it's not anymore.
It wasn't a section, it just keeps pounding, pounding, the trucks go out there, if they're empty, it's worse. Probably even gets worse.
You couldn't hear it before because of the manhole.
Well, that's right. Can we give you some earmuffs in the meantime? Well, that's what I would try, I put it in my ears, but I didn't work it. You know, I mean smell it.
We'll continue with it, ask Pendot to try to address that.
Okay. Second, where are we at with this aim, and the borough and railroad about this money?
I have the litigation going.
We still have it going?
Yeah.
Well, how, how long is it gonna take, Mike?
Litigation takes a while.
Forever?
No, but litigation, you're not in and out of court just like that. There's discovery going on, we're waiting on discovery requests, there, I think you're gonna be probably getting discovery to us, that's how litigation goes. But we'll, I'll keep it going, and if you wanna call me and ask me, I'll keep your breath.
I'll, I'll be calling you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Please stand up and state your name and address.
Lisa Howser, Twenty Market Street. On July thirty-first, I was crossing the red light from Sayre de Sight over to Rafferty Side with the crosswalk, and I was hit by a Dodge Dakota pickup truck. Now, it didn't show up on the cameras, 'cause there's a forty-five second lap, a six camera thing, whatever like that, and she said I wasn't in the crosswalk, I was. I was downtown delivering papers, since the bridge is out, my route has to be different 'cause I do the Horizon Majestic House, the police station, the borough, Byron, and one apartment over here, so I do up here first. And when you press the crosswalk button, you get the white to go, and you start across and you're three steps out, and the almost hit me in the same spot, the same exact way. I get the walk sign, he got the green light, he's going to turn right down Rotet, I'm in the same exact spot, he almost hit me, and I'm standing there pointing at the white guy, I got the right to go. Now, the point is, they're not giving the person that hit me a ticket, because it's she said, she said, and there's no camera there. Now, it happened two more times this past Friday. The first car, I don't know who it was, I got it halfway out and I had it back up, push the button, start again, turns white, they get the green light, I go to go, and Martha Morris almost takes me out, and I cursed her out. I said, "I have the F-ing right away," and then she had that big dog in the back, I thought it was gonna be lunch. But something has to be done there, I don't know if it should be a thirty-second delay, and I thought if a vehicle hits a pedestrian, they get a ticket. And also, I would like to see if a person hits a pedestrian, they get a ticket. That's all.
Thank you, we, we can, we'll have the Park and Traffic Committee take a look at the timing of the pedestrian signal on there. As far as when and how tickets are issued, that's not something the council decides that's left up to them.
But is it, like, when you look up Pennsylvania crosswalk laws on the internet, it comes up, and it says, A, a motor vehicle cannot hit a pedestrian, it's illegal, and then D, it's a fifty-dollar fine, revamped two thousand seven, two thousand eleven, and it goes on for pages and pages. But basically, A, a motor vehicle cannot hit a pedestrian, especially in a crosswalk, she's saying I wasn't, I was till she hit me out of it, and now I'm in pain and I'm suffering, and I'm just very upset that the person, that you can be in a vehicle and, and hit a person and not get a citation. I'm very upset.
I understand it, I do understand that you're upset, and I can understand why, but you can understand why borough council can't tell police officers to, to issue a ticket or not issue a ticket.
Right.
You can understand how that would-
Yes.
This place would be filled with people saying, "Issue a ticket, don't issue a ticket," and, and we'd be voting on whether or not to issue tickets, and you can understand why that's not the way we do things, and that's why we hire officers.
And, and I really don't know that they investigated it real well, like, we both filled out statements, but no one actually, like, the police officer that was Carl Harry, he spoke to me when I spoke to him. Now, I know it's not like on TV, like fantasy world, but they should, should, you know, sit down with each person and get their view of it, get their story, but not just the written statement, so the police officer can make a decision and see if there is, you know, and I don't know how you could miss me. At first, I thought maybe she was on the cell phone, but as it keeps happening there, it is the thing, because the person gets the white walk sign to go, and they get the green light, and they, maybe the walk should have a thirty-second, you know, time to walk the, you know, there.
Well, and if, if you'd be willing to stick around after the meeting, perhaps the corporal could, could have a sidebar conversation with you about the specifics of your incident, and, and maybe talk to you about how we handle, how we handle this case.
Okay.
That's not something that the council's gonna be very good at explaining, that's why we hire police officers.
And I know that those lights are like Pendot, 'cause it's a highway, and maybe you should have, they should have to come in. At the five points, all traffic stops for a person to walk, but there, at that intersection, being a side one, that gets the white walk thing, and they get the green light. If they could give the walker like a thirty-second go before they get the green light, you know, to be turning left, I don't know, and that traffic lane isn't really lane there. Before the bridge was out, with me being downtown doing those papers, a lot of people are in that left lane to go to left Rotet, but they go straight. Now, there's no markings on the road, maybe you could think about painting a few lines or something, there used to be a sign there, I don't know if anybody took it out.
There's not a, there's not a turning lane heading west on that intersection.
You mean, there shouldn't be two lanes there?
There's not two lanes, there are not two lanes there.
Oh.
It was removed, yeah.
Well, then, maybe paint it, you know what I mean, like, even if you have to yellow curb it or something, that people don't go to be in two lanes? 'Cause a lot of times, people will be going in the left lane, they think to go, and then the person in the right thinks they're going straight-
Right.
-but they both go at the same time.
Yeah.
So if there's not really two lanes there-
And there are.
-clear mark it.
Well, it's, it's a lot easier to mark that there is a lane there than that there isn't a lane.
Right, I, I understand, 'cause, you know, there's not parking, so.
Ma'am, if I may, the, the white walk signal, they can refer to it the five points, and believe me, I'm not trying to present myself as an expert on Pendot rules and regulations 'cause I'm not, but to my knowledge, that ten-second pedestrian only cycle at the five points is somewhat unique. It's, to my knowledge, having, having a white walk thing with a, you know, along with a green, green light for, for traffic to pass, is more along the lines of what Pendot normally does.
Okay.
So there, there, and there is, there's some responsibility for the drivers to, to watch the pedestrians, but there's also some responsibility for the pedestrians, that you can't just blindly walk out and not be aware of the surroundings they could walk into, so it might have to be just a little-
Well, right, but I'm also a driver, and I also know, if I see a person walking out in front of me, I'm gonna stop a lot sooner than when they hit me.
And, and I'm certainly not saying that-
If she on her cell phone, I don't know, and I don't know.
I'm certainly not suggesting that you should be target practice for, for cars as you're trying to-
Yeah, yeah, what you do, it's like you get set up like the head bowl, 'cause you're in the same exact spot every time. Oh, I flag now, I wave my hands, I yell at people, "Thank you for not hitting me," and all like that. Yes, I even considering wearing like this color yellow downtown.
Carrie's just saying that, she's glad that you have a good reason for doing that, she was wondering what you were doing.
Yeah. She knows I take the paper and stop out front and let people walk, because when that sign was out front here, people, I guess they don't know the law, that means you stop, the pedestrian gets to cross. I don't care if there's twenty cars in front of you and behind you, that yellow signs up, it means, I believe, you have to travel only fifteen or twenty miles an hour, and if the pedestrian comes, you stop, they get to go. Even if it's not on a crosswalk, wherever that signs up.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything they wish to address council? Mayor's report.
I'd like to add, first of all, to a statement that Mike had made earlier, we did have the Tamazco night out, and it was very successful to all those who participated and organized, thank you, everyone did a great job, it was well attended, the fires police were there and, and did a great job supporting, of course, Leona did a great job organizing, and just everybody who came out of the community and, and the folks to help make it happen, it was a, a great program, so I'd like to thank everybody for that. Been noticing, not only through the department, but myself as well, a lot of dogs on the street, and unattended, I asked the public to please keep an eye on your pets and keep them under control. I did talk with Sue Schaefer this afternoon, which Sue does a great job at Tamazco Animal Rescue, she also has, plenty of volunteered with George Geisinger and many other folks that, that assist, but they're always looking for extra volunteers to help with, with working with the animals of the community, whether it be dogs or cats, but Sue did tell me, what a question came in today, there is still one active pen that we use down at Treatment Plant, Sue also has a pen by our house, if, if we do come up with some pets at large just the same. I recently got a call from one of our neighboring communities about some issues with some contractors and some scams that are possibly going on, so by all means, if you're doing anything, and community members are doing anything with any home improvements, please check on, on the contractor that you work for, make sure that they're safe, got their numbers of the state, they're certified, and, and, you know, be wary of any scams that may possibly happen. I think that's all. One other item, I spoke with several of the members of the council this past week about the tickets being issued for quality of life warrants, and we got a report today, there are quite a few being issued, which makes me realize that the process is working, the tickets are being written, and it's becoming a bit of a cumbersome project in processing them, getting them over to the magistrate as well, so I, I know I did speak with some of you on that, I believe there was a resolution, we're forward to working through that, Kevin, would you have a plan in hand in place? We'll be glad to work with you together with ED and the team to put something together. Appreciate that, and that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and you're absolutely correct, and I just wanna thank the staff that's handling these tickets on all ends, it's not just a matter of vision, it's a whole back office part of handling.
I was concerned that we weren't getting the, the chance to go back and, and look at things and, and follow up on, and seeing the volume of tickets and what's coming in and the returns that are getting out there, and checking up and following up on different issues that have not only happened once, but obviously multiple times, or just never resolved from the original issue, so it's nice to see it's actually working, and it's good to have an overload of, of these issues being, be resolved or cited for. I think the process can grow, and there's plenty of opportunity, and we'll move forward, thank you.
Our solicitor was called out on a phone call. After that, on the agenda, we have the various departments, the reports from our borough departments.
Motion to accept the reports is reserved, second.
Motion by Brian, and a second by Dave to accept the reports. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Ayes have it. Unfinished business. Get the motion to adopt an ordinance establishing certain parking regulations, setting fines and penalties.
Second.
Motion by Brian, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, this is the adoption of an ordinance, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Kara?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Smolgin?
Yes.
Trudish?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Smolgin?
Yes.
Brutus? Thurs?
Yes.
Any other unfinished business?
The other unfinished, unfinished business, um, Five Point intersection, Railroad Street, northbound, traffic issue, there's still a, a big problem, trucks going up it, is that true? Mr. Woods, can you elaborate a little bit on this just before you go? Uh, the traffic going up the wrong way on Railroad Street seems to be constant.
Yes.
I mean, when I drive through the Five Points, I see a car or a truck driving up there all the time. How can we solve that once and for all? Any, any ideas?
I think it's, it's, well, it's posted by Pendog.
Right.
Uh, there's some signage there.
Right.
And I think it's just a lack of familiarity with the, with this area. I mean, most people in this area know that intersection. But you're right, I mean, I've, I've seen it myself when I'm, I'm on duty or going to pick up my son or something, and I see tractor trailers backing into the Five Points. The only other thing I could think of is maybe it would be something to do with Pendog, if they could put some kind of flashing light in.
I think a flashing light would be better.
Yeah, I mean, the signs are there, but...
They're going through there, they're watching the road and stuff like that, the tractor trailers, they're not easy to get around it. It's okay, if they had a flashing light, the light would draw their eyes to it, they would see it, but these signs, they're not, you're not paying attention to the signs because they're watching where they're driving.
The people who live in that, that particular block, even the second, third block, tell me that, that happens every day and at night. Traffic goes the wrong way, and as you know, they've done numerous, it did, it did a lot of damage, tractor trailers try to turn around, they're in a parking lot, and they knock out, they knocked out signs and poles and...
That has happened.
Dave, it has to, it has to stop, so that's, that's a good idea, I never thought of a flashing light. Can we pursue that somehow? For some research?
We'd have to talk to Pendog, and I know we discussed this when we met with Pendog, uh, I think it came up, but I don't believe that there was a resolution off.
I think they should have a red, a flashing light there, do not enter. I believe that would...
There's a small, you know, there's signs there, but I think they'll see it.
Whatever we do, well, whatever we do would have to be proof by Pendog.
Can you, can you ask them, can you ask them something that we can do that's more than the signage?
The signage isn't working.
There was, I think there were three options that we talked, there were three options that, that revolved around, uh, taking down of the, uh, the pole at the bank.
Right.
Okay, and we talked about all different things, and the one was the valyries, which we, we've done. There was a second part of that, which I believe was a signage part, and then there was a third part of that, which was a little bit of a lane shift, because the lanes, the lanes are out of, are not the same width there. So there were two other kind of follow-up things to, to go there as, as part of our effort to save the, the poles.
Yeah, we can, he's talking about traffic continuing...
Northbound on 309.
Okay, so those two things were tied together, I didn't remember it that way, but... I know the, the lane shift was also to protect the pole at...
Right.
At the Five Points.
Right.
And, uh...
And si- and signage, and he, he, uh, I'm sorry, what was his name?
Dennis Toomey.
Dennis Toomey, yeah, Dennis Toomey, I think, actually, uh, on that one walk-around, we looked at it and admitted that he would, he had hoped the signage would have been a little more...
Also wondering if we could, paint the, paint the roadway or something like that.
I think a flashing light's gonna be the best.
I'm, I'm certainly not suggesting that that's a bad idea, it'd be a combination of both.
But, but Corporal Woods was right, uh, anybody new to the area, they'll automatically up that street.
Anytime I've seen it, it's usually a car without a state plates on it, you know, but, and it's, I think it's more common at night when there's no, when you have very low...
No one to follow.
Traffic.
And no one to follow.
Yeah, no, no one's...
Who's gonna work on this?
Kevin's gonna contact Pendog and see what solutions are available to it. Dennis has been very good, we've worked with him a lot over the last couple of years, of coming up with a menu of options. Sometimes we don't like the options, but he's been helping up with options, with the options that we have.
Okay, thanks.
Any other unfinished business?
Just one, Mike, I just wanna update everybody on the, uh, we're going through some updates and upgrades on a lot of our system we're talking about, and we talked about possibly going for a bond issue. Um, we are not going for a bond issue, but just financing, and we are sending out requests for proposals from lending institutions. So hopefully, in the next month, uh, we will hone in on, on an option and a lending institution, and we'll report back.
Where, where do you do that? That loan needs to be...
Um, I don't know, at this point, I'm assuming probably we would maybe need a cosigner, I don't know that.
We usually, we usually back any authority fund.
All right, and, and we're not there yet, but what's gonna happen is the way they, they set up the, the payments, is they're taking care of the project, and they're also paying off all the existing Pennvest or anything else in one lump sum. So they're paying everything off, basically refinancing the other loan, um, and going from there.
So the new work that is gonna be done, and you're gonna be paying somebody, I mean, if they don't do the work right, or it's something false...
Like a part of your performance.
That's all contract, big performance bond, you're in some contracts.
It's, it's, it's more, more, more just the, the way you're labeling it, it's, it's, it's a borrowing that's still approved by D C E D. You still follow the same procedure, uh, uh, for a, for a loan that you're doing, you get the financing that you're looking at, you shift out your financing to different institutions, you see where you get the best rate, they combine them all, and they do it, the process they go through is the same as, 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 as a bond issue. It still has to be approved by D C E D, you have to make sure that they have enough finances and, and, and back it through the plan's name, and it's the same process. Exact same.
It's not, it's not invisible bond.
Correct, people are right.
Does that make Pennvest's...
That's, that's performance.
Yes, because then at that point, you can't have any debt that's coming out.
Yes.
How to have a little bond, uh, a, a issue with the borrowing of money. It's under the, the municipal...
But our authorities always have a performance bond.
They'll be a bond for their, for their work.
What I'm saying is, if he borrows $5 million, and some guy says, "I'm gonna do $1 million worth of insurance up there, give me $1 million." Give him, he gives, he gives him $1 million, and then he wants...
That's a performance bond.
That's a performance bond.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
We do honor...
Yeah, but why is it coming from there?
All right, thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Bills and claims.
Make a motion all bills and claims be, uh, approved, being met yesterday, and everything's in order.
Motion by Brian, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Aye to have it.
Can I ask, can we circle back to the solicitor's report, this is, here's the...
He's gonna have to wait for the hand.
Oh.
Yeah, right. New business.
I'd like to take the motion. The borough, down to the pumping station, level that off where the police drive in and out of the police cars. They're bouncing in and out of there. Flying tires, we're flying, flying front ends up, and that's bad down there.
Are you talking about the curb?
Yeah, where they pull in and park below the pumping station by a firefly.
Right on 309.
That's a mess down there, and they, they fly in there, because traffic is coming up from South Tamahua, and they make a quick turn in there, and that, and cars are just bouncing around in there.
There is second.
Check our bills for front-end alignments and tires, it's not too good.
There is second through...
Ask that, man, any other question, what exactly are we trying to do?
Trying to do something with it down there.
With what, with what?
Either blacktop it, or if you had milling, put millings in there, no, don't pay to quit.
At least level off the...
At least, you know, level off.
It's not funny.
I think a robbery with...
I wanna keep, you buy the tires and paper front end alignments then, I don't care.
I have to look at it daily, you know, there's, there's a very wobbly rut, so there's the...
Didn't he do a robbery down there?
No, they're just...
Hey, all you have to do is either put millings or blacktop, one or the other, because they, they're in there all the time, constantly. If you wanna buy the tires and buy paper front end alignments, okay, both of you can do it.
I'm not arguing with that, rather than helping.
Okay, then...
John, forgive me, I, this is always something you've looked at, that I, I'm hearing about it for the first time, so you're talking about a car that's coming up the...
This is the place where a police sit to, to trap.
Understood.
I just don't, and, and we put millings or paving down there, and all people...
The other thing is, you put, put dirt down there, and if they pull out fast after somebody, they're spinning the wheels. It's okay, you're, you're loosening that up, and every time it rains, it's washing out. So it, it's, it's all washed out better, Kevin can tell you that.
John, I guess, I think if you let us, we'll...
Either blacktop it or put millings in it.
I think we'll approve this if you stop yelling at it.
I don't care, I give up. Every time I say something, everybody gives me cockney eyes, so, okay, forget about it.
Anybody else have any questions or comments about the motion? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Anyone? Aye to have it. Any other new business? Solicitor's report.
I got Rick the drafts of the mutual aid agreements, we're doing one for each municipality that he requested, so there's four there, I think it's Coldale, Rush, Walker, and West Penn. So there're gonna be four separate mutual aid agreements, one or, one ordinance, it'll be an ordinance approving the intermunicipal agreements, but one through Blount, and how we decide to get out of any of those mutual aids, we'll be able to do that. Uh, Kevin and I are still working on just the, the final amendment on the quality of life, so that's there, and I had to do the executive session. It's short, yeah, I have to go through it.
Okay, if I can ask in the, in the public part, though, and I, I know you weren't here at the last meeting, but are you aware of the discussion that we had about the property line dispute with the Marsons and Loughlins or whatever?
No.
Okay. I was not aware that...
Anytime, I always...
That was given to Josh, our zoning solicitor, on offer. What is it? Take care of that, the zoning board solicitor was taking care of that. Okay. Thank you.
Last thing on the agenda is an executive session, so we're doing a, to be one. We're doing an executive session.
Stick here, I'll be real quick, sorry.
Second by Dave, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.